Yeah, we'll call to order the January eighth, January eighth regular meeting of the Huron Board of Education. We'll ask Mr. Christopherson to make note of the roll call. This time, I would ask everyone to rise as Frank Heinz leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Frank. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. The most recent agendas are in front of us. There's been a few changes. One resignation, a couple of open enrollment requests, some celebrate successes in the district, and two items in new business. Move adoption.
Second.
And move in second to adopt the agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. Moving into dates to remember. January tenth will be an early release day. January fifteenth is Martin Luther King holiday, no school that day. January twentieth will be credit recovery day at the high school. January twenty-second, Board of Education meeting at five thirty here in the Instructional Planning Center. January twenty-ninth is Huron High School Registration Open House from five thirty to eight forty-five. February seventh is an early release day. February twelfth, Board of Education meeting at five thirty here in the IPC. February nineteenth, President's Day, no school that day. February twenty-sixth will be Board of Education meeting at five thirty here in the IPC. Those are our dates to remember. Now we'll move into community input for any items not on the agenda. Is there anybody present for community input for anything not on the agenda? Seeing no one rushed to the microphone, we have no conflict disclosure or consideration of waivers. So we'll move into the consent agenda. Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the following. Approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings. Consideration and approval of bills. Approval and/or correction of the financial report. We have eight new hires to the district that require Board approval to be covered by our workman's compensation plan. We have seven resignations for Board approval. We have Deb Pearl from Concessions with four months of service. Marietta Riedel, special education teacher at the high school with thirty-two years of service. Jeff Dar Senior, transportation bus driver, nine years of service. Mary Hirschman from Food Service with sixteen years of service. Diana Nebelsec, Business Office District Purchasing with twenty-four years of service. Michael Taplet, Huron Middle School Principal, seventeen years of service. Lacey Schroeder, Special Education Para-educator at the high school with four months' service. We have two open enrollment requests for Board approval. OE twenty-seventeen oh six and OE twenty-seventeen oh seven. And we have one grant application. It's Sherri Nelson applying for Twenty First Century Grant. That's our consent agenda. We can pass it with one motion, or if any Board member would like to pull any item out for new business consideration, we can do that. Move approval of consent?
Second.
And move in second to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll turn it to our superintendent as he celebrates his successes in our district.
Okay, thank you very much. The first thing we want to do is congratulate on staff members that are bringing new children into the world this past month. Carissa and Logan Corko. Carissa's a first grade teacher at Buchanan on the birth of their son Baylor Allen Corko, born December twelfth. And congratulations to Cassidy King, Special Ed Para-educator at Buchanan, and Landon Ochsner on the birth of their son Keegan Ochsner, born December sixteenth. Congratulations to both of those. Thank you to the fourth and fifth graders at the Washington Four Five Center for participating in the Wear a Hat on Fridays for twenty-five cent fundraiser. The school raised a hundred and forty-eight dollars to be given to the Beadle County Humane Society. Again, we appreciate those that are sent in. We send out a notice each month to ask for those to be sent in so we can share them with the community. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsec. Moving into Board reports. Our first report will be the good news report from the CTE program. We have Mrs. Konchny, Mr. Posma, and some Huron High School students who attended the National FFA Convention.
Good evening. This year, this is, I put together some pictures that are happening in different classes and then also brought some staff and students to present to you. So building trades, the weather has been mostly favorable in the construction so far this year. They have it all enclosed, and I believe all of the windows are in, they're doing interior work. The principles of biomedical science, new for this coming school year. It has been approved as a core life science credit. So students may choose to take it as a CTE class, or they may choose to take it as a life science credit beginning next year. And in five years, we will have to renew that. Culinary arts and creative foods have been busy cooking. Students sold, made and sold Christmas cookies to community members, area businesses, and high school students, and they had a very good profit this year compared to last year. The human development classes traveled to Head Start, M&amp;M daycare, Kindernook, and Buchanan kindergarten classrooms. They were teacher helpers, and then they also created a lesson plan activity and implemented that activity in the classroom. As far as numbers, a percent of students in each grade enrolled in at least one CTE course. Very comparable to last year. As a whole, sixty-four percent of our high school student population is taking at least one CTE class. Last year it was sixty-three percent. So we have four hundred and fifty-eight of seven hundred and twenty-one students as of December fifteenth that were enrolled in at least one CTE class. So, Mr. Posma? Let you introduce the students.
It's IPC booth, right?
Yes.
Technology is great until it doesn't work.
It'll, it'll happen. I don't know how many times you have to tell it to put the four numbers in, but it'll happen. We'll wait. Hello, Mr. Allers.
Hi.
Yes. They will not let me hook up. Link up, whatever we'll call it.
Well, while we're waiting, if the students would like to introduce themselves?
I'm sorry, I should do that. Mr. Posma, Mike Posma, Leah Marshall, and William Torres. These are two of the students that were fortunate enough to be able to go to the National FFA Convention, which was held October twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth in Indianapolis, Indiana. There was twelve students that went, myself, Mr. Swenson, and Mr. Swenson's wife went along as chaperones. So we had a total of fifteen people that were on the trip. And we drove down. We spent our first night in Peoria, Illinois. And feel free to jump in when I get to certain things. But on the way down, one of the things, I don't know if any of you ever watched the History Channel on TV and watched the TV show American Pickers. We got to stop there and, on the way through, and visit their, their stores that they have in, oh gosh, I can't remember. It's right on the Quad Cities, right on the river, as you're going into Illinois. But we got to stop there and, and visit. I didn't get to see any of the, the actors, but it was still kind of fun. It's, it's pretty much just a tourist trap, attraction. And they had a few of the items, I mean, I watch the show a lot, so I recognize some of the, some of the items that they had. Some of the kids watch it pretty regularly too, so they were able to recognize some of the things that they had purchased over the years at the, on the TV show.
Roger, are you able to help them get hooked up here?
No, I didn't want to disturb what you said.
Oh, no. Okay.
So you want to go to IPC booth?
Yep.
And it came up, nothing comes up. It did once, I typed in the numbers and then nothing.
Yeah, she didn't.
Let's try in the interest of you all in here. If we connect IPC TV. You have to be on a different input though.
Yeah. So anyway. Hey, alright. We have the magic touch. Okay, I. There. This is our Tuesday, our first stop on the way through was at the Antique Archaeology. It's called, where the American Pickers TV show. And didn't get to see any of the actors, like I said, but here's a picture of the kids. You probably recognize the car that's always out front on the TV station, or on the TV show. Here we're out front of the, of one of their buildings that they have. They got two small garages, and one of them is pretty much just strictly souvenirs, and the other one's got some souvenirs. And this is the one where they have a lot of the things that they've purchased, that they've got showcased there. And I guess we could have bought something if we really wanted to, but they're kind of expensive. Second stop, we spent the night in Peoria, Illinois. And this was, I'd never done this before, but I'd heard of them, the escape rooms. I don't know if any of you are familiar with escape rooms. What they are, is you get to go, you split into groups. You can have up to eight people in a room, and you've got to find clues throughout the room in order to be able to get out. They're locked in, it's monitored and everything, so if something happens, whatever, they, they can come in. But you're locked in the room. The kids have to work together in order to find clues and find their way out of the room. They're split into two groups. We decided to go with the boys versus the girls. Now, that's what they decided. They have sixty minutes. That's, the, the name of the place was gone in sixty, in sixty minutes. So they have sixty minutes to find the clues in order to get out of the room. They had to work together, all those things, so they had a lot of team building experiences with this. Both groups did get out within their sixty minutes. The girls did make it out a little bit faster. They were like in fifty, fifty-four minutes, and the boys were like fifty-seven or fifty-eight minutes. This is the boys after they, they got out. I was, I went in with the boys into their room. Mr. Swenson and Mrs. Swenson went in with the girls into their room. And I think they had a lot of fun doing that. I mean, just sitting back and observing them and watching them. Then on Wednesday, drove the rest of the way to Indianapolis, toured the Speedway, Indianapolis Motor Speedway, home of the Brickyard and the Indy 500. We were able to take a, we couldn't get on the track, the main track, what we normally could in the years past. They had it rented out. There was going to be an Indy car doing some testing on the track that particular day. So we got to go through the road course a little bit on the infield. So they did do that with us. And we got to, you know, since we couldn't go on the track, we got to stop and visit Victory Lane. And they also got to see the bricks where they, it was actually part of the finish line, which is kind of cool. Here's the kids at the, on Victory Lane, and we had to kiss the bricks. So, there's all twelve of the students lined up kissing the bricks. Just some random pictures of the kids as they're going through the museum. We also got to, part of that was the Indianapolis 500 Speedway Museum. You can see in the background of the pictures, a lot of the older cars that they, that they have from years past. Here's the, they do have a, an Indy car there where you can sit in, we can have someone sit in it, take pictures with it. Gracie Sorenfelder, she was the one sitting in there. She was the only senior on the trip, so we figured that it was only right for her to get to sit in the car. But those are the twelve kids again. Wednesday night, went to Rascal Flatts. I think this is probably one of their, the kids is probably one of them. If they asked them, this is one of the funnest things they did. Rascal Flatts and Runaway June, the interesting thing about Runaway June, it's a group of three women, country, country western group. And one of the ladies on there has a pretty famous uncle, I believe it was. Western actor from years ago, John Wayne, was their uncle. So it was kind of neat. They talked a little bit about that, it was a blast, and even, even the old people on the trip enjoyed it. It's held in Lucasola Stadium, home of the Indianapolis Colts, so that was even kind of fun just to go into, see that facility. Before the concert, you can kind of see everybody's pretty excited, not so, you know, starting to get a little tired afterwards. It was a long day. Thursday was the day that we got to spend at, we spent at the National Convention. And throughout the course of the, of the week, it started on Wednesday and ended Saturday at noon. There was over sixty-seven thousand FFA members from across the country that attended this. There's also even some from Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands that were there. So it was, it was a pretty awesome experience just to get to see people from all over the country. The session that we went to, we had the privilege of listening to Leila Ali, who was the daughter of Muhammad Ali, tell her story of how she, her boxing career, and how she's, you know, growing up as Muhammad Ali's daughter and things like that. It was kind of interesting and fun to listen to. The seats we had, we were up, up a little ways, but it wasn't so bad. This is the, the place where the Indianapolis Pacers play, or Indiana Pacers play their professional basketball games. So getting, got to see some pretty, pretty cool facilities as well. The rest of the day was spent at the Career Expo, Career Expo that they have. Pretty much every agriculture business that you can think of was represented there. Every agriculture college from across the country was represented. So then, as they, they spent the day walking around and talking to these people, they got to visit, you know, learn from some pretty incredible business people throughout the, throughout the country. We even had the privilege of running into former Huron FFA member, Taryn Hupp, who was working at the convention. She works for, in the HR department of Wilbur Ellis. And they were there, so we, we did get to meet up with her, that was kind of cool. And they all, all are dressed up in their fancy little corduroy that they all love to wear so much. Then Taryn also joined in. Thursday night, we got to go to a professional rodeo. We had some pretty awesome seats. This is, this is our view from our seats for the rodeo. We're right in the middle of the arena, first and second rows. And this is, some of the kids even got to experience sitting on a, on a live bull prior to the, to the rodeo. Leah was one of them. Was your heart racing a little bit sitting on the bull?
No.
Not really. I don't mind what it been. So here's some of the kids that got to sit, sit on the bull and got the pictures taken, which was a pretty cool experience. Still can't believe you weren't nervous. Friday morning, on Friday, we took the ninety mile drive to Louisville, Kentucky. The convention used to be in Louisville, so I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the different things we can do there. And they have two of the most fun tours that, you know, educational tours that kids can go on. Churchill Downs, home of the Kentucky Derby, and the Louisville Slugger Museum and Factory. We got a, this year, we were able to get a backstretch tour of Churchill Downs, where we were, you know, we were able to see the horses in the stalls, see the horses as they're being groomed. Also had the opportunity to observe horses while they're being worked out. It included a breakfast for us and everything. This is the actual starting gate that is used for the Kentucky Derby. We were able to get right down to it and take a picture with it. This is a gentleman, after we did the breakfast and everything, we were able to go out and stand by the track and watch the horses as they're warming up. This is a gentleman that owner trainer. He spent about ten minutes visiting with the kids about, you know, being a trainer, how he got his start. He's originally from New Orleans, Louisiana. He's had several champion horses, thoroughbreds, that he is, that he's raised and trained. So that was really, really cool of him to stop and, and visit with the kids for a little bit. Able to get really up close. These are some pictures of the horses as they're training, as they're going by, getting their morning workouts. So I mean, we're, you know, within five feet of the, of the actual horses. This is probably my favorite picture, the whole, of everything that we did. This is that, out in front of Churchill Downs, the whole group in the Huron FFA t-shirts. Do you remember the name of the horse that's buried there? And under that statue, there's a, there's a horse that is actually buried there, and they, they made this monument. It's a former Kentucky Derby winner, and I cannot.
Secretary.
Nope, not Secretary yet.
I don't know if he was a Triple Crown.
It wasn't a Triple Crown winner, but it was a Derby winner.
And it was the only horse that's ever been actually buried.
Yes, it's the only horse that's buried there, at Churchill Downs. So we got to take a picture with that, in that monument. Toward Louisville Slugger Museum, a lot of the Major League Baseball players, current and past, get their bats made there. Able to take a picture in front of the world's largest bat. This picture doesn't really do it justice. It's probably about ten stories tall. I mean, it's, it's huge. And if you're really able to sit down with, with all the kids that went, probably their most fun that they had was Friday night. We, we had a, our last night there, we had to, had to do something kind of fun. We spent it at one of the largest haunted houses that I've ever heard of or seen. It was incredible. They had four different haunts going on there. They had two separate haunted houses, a haunted hayride, and a haunted corn maze. And we had to spend two and a half, three hours there. And they, you almost had to drag them out of there to get, to get out of there. But here's a picture that we had out front. And then probably the funnest thing about it is, we got one of the actors to pose for a picture with us too. And the gentleman with the chainsaw, obviously no chain on it, but he, one of the Hague Twins there in the orange and black coat, he was, had to go to the restroom, and he's in this, one of the porta-potties out there. And he's waiting for him. So as soon as he opens the door to come out, he starts the chainsawing. It's a good thing he waited till after, because otherwise he would have had a nasty clean though. But it was, it was kind of fun. But the kids had a, had a blast doing that as well. And then the last thing here, a former Huron FFA member, Braden Hinker. I received the American FFA degree, and this is the highest award that an FFA member can receive. And this was on Saturday when he received it, so we were not able to actually see him walk across stage. But he did receive this, and so we're really proud of what Braden has done. So, you guys have anything you want to add to what we?
Not really, I think you covered it all.
Yep. Happy to answer any questions if you have any for us.
Questions from any Board members?
It was, it was a blast, we had a lot of fun.
I, I happened to be at a location, and I cannot remember where we were.
You were in, you sent me a text.
Was I in Ohio?
You were in Ohio, yes.
Yeah, but for whatever reason, they had a network that was covering the National FFA.
RFD TV.
Yeah, and it was really, really interesting, and I, it's a, it's a major, major production. And I just, I can remember, I was babysitting a grandchild, and so I texted Mike to find out if they were there. But it was, it was quite a production. I wish our folks here could see that, that kind of production through the networks.
A couple of years ago, was able to go on the trip with us as a chaperone.
Pretty incredible.
Yeah, it was, it is a lot of fun, and it's an awesome experience for, for these kids to get to, to experience it. Alright.
Okay, well, thank you, excellent report.
Thank you.
Okay, our next report will be District Branding Report from two of our members, Mr. Lee and Mr. Bischoff. They're even going up to the podium.
We talked about it, and I think it makes a better production with them up there, because I think they've got some things they're going to cover digitally.
Do we need to do something here? Sherri's going to come up, right?
Yeah.
It's going, right on. Alright. Well, looking back about three years ago at our school board goal-setting session, we sat down and we started talking about branding, and that was something that the whole board kind of got behind me. It was kind of my initiative to look into the branding initiative. But three years ago, we started talking about it. We put it on our, our goals, goals report that we were going to look into it. We didn't really get much traction on it the first year. The second year, Sherri and I did some, did some more talks about that, had a couple sit-down meetings with that. But then this year is kind of when we really got going on it. We formed a committee. The committee members are myself, Craig Lee, Sherri Nelson, Terry Roder, Mike Radke, Kelly Christopherson, and Terry Nebelsec. And so we've been meeting, we've had a few sit-downs, and we've done some initial research as far as what kind of brands are out there for the, the school district. So I guess that's kind of where we're at right now. And Sherri's got a nice presentation to, to go through, and Craig can have some comments too, if he's got something he wants to share.
I, you know, I just, being a new Board member, I found it very interesting to see all the different, just, just how fragmented our brand is. And so I think bringing it all together underneath one concise umbrella is going to be pretty interesting and, and pretty important. I mean, just even in the arena, we've got three different Tigers, Tiger logos, depending on where you're looking. So, yeah, it was just, it was interesting to see who uses what and, and trying to pull all that into the fold. So I think, I think we're going to look at some of that.
Okay, sounds good. So the first thing that our committee worked on was taking inventory of our current brands that we are using in our district. So Mr. Nebelsec sent out a letter to the all staff and asked people to send pictures of the different symbols that we use to represent the Huron School District. So what I'm about to show you is what has been compiled across the district. It's not everything, but it'll give you a good idea. And the reason that we took inventory is for two reasons. One, to see if there was any continuity about what we were doing in the district with branding. And two, to see what kind of ideas are out there that we might want to incorporate into our branding package going forward. So we'll go ahead and take a look at this. This was submitted by Mr. Roder. These are Tiger logos that he uses with the Activities Department. We also talked about stationery and how everybody has different stationaries in the district. So you'll see this is the Activities Department stationery. More pictures from the Activities Department, you might recognize the chairs that are used in the Huron Arena. Uh, the badges that the officials wear, um, and handbooks. Most handbooks have different Tigers on them, we noticed as we go through these. Then we'll take some, a look at some pictures that you might repre- uh, recognize from the arena. And you'll see that we have many different stripes and colors in the arena. And then we move into some images from the Band Department. Over on the left is the fifth grade band, uh, symbol, and then of course, the high school. And one of the things that came up in conversation was, what role does age play as far as age-appropriate with branding symbols? Something that we'll need to talk about. The drama trailer. The logo on the football helmets. This is the, uh, an agenda from a Board of Education, and you'll see that there's not a lot of branding on this particular document. These are signs that you'll see on the buildings and grounds throughout our district. Channel six logos. In the community even, you'll notice some of our symbols have gotten out, the post on the left is, uh, was taken from the Norby Center, on the right is the Huron Ambulance. When you look at the websites of the Chamber of Commerce, you'll notice that it's referred to as Huron Public Schools. Um, we also refer to ourselves as the Huron School District. So that's something that we wanna talk about, is which one are we? The Culinary Arts. The Curriculum Office, uh, this is examples of documents from my office and the stationery, you'll notice this one says Huron Public Schools. The Food Service Trucks. Food Service Menus. These are documents that are on the website, and they're high school documents. You'll see a Tiger on the left, you'll notice not a lot of branding, uh, in the documents from the high school on our website. The High School Newspaper. The Instructional Planning Center, the left is the podium in front of me, uh, the right is the lettering behind the school board. The library, high school library website, Tiger. And then we move into the Middle School, these are images that you can find in the Middle School. The, uh, upper, uh, right-hand corner is the logo that you'll see across the back of the bleachers in the gym at the Middle School. More Middle School images. Email signatures, depends on whose email you read as to what it says at the bottom of the signatures. The front of our school buildings. And then we get into social media, uh, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. Um, you'll notice on the right is a program from one of the music programs, and it references social media accounts by the Music Department. Tiger Roar Merchandise. And then we get into some more social media, because one of the things that we realized is, we don't have an inventory of all the social media accounts that are affiliated with our school district. Right now, people can just make their own account, they can put whatever they want on it, and we wanna talk more about what would that look like if we had a little bit more control on the branding of it. So you can see a variety of Facebook accounts that are associated with the Huron School District right now. Including a Facebook, uh, page by our superintendent. Teachers have individual accounts, school buildings have accounts. Clubs and organizations and sports have accounts, there's our Huron FFA chapter. Twitter accounts. Our school district has an official account for Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. Huron Tech Department. And a few Instagram accounts as well. And then you get into Special Services and the documents that are on the website are associated with those, some branded, some not. Superintendent's documents. Tiger After School Program Handbook. And the Transportation Department. The tennis courts have no branding on it and no signage, we noticed. Tiger Stadium. The middle one is the Tiger Roar Paws, the fundraiser throughout the district. And this is the front of our district website, the top part of it. And the bottom part of it. And then we did a little market research too, one of the things that we've been thinking a lot about is, um, we have the, uh, neighboring Harrisburg Tigers. And if we're talking about branding, we wanna make sure that our brand is different than the Harrisburg Tigers, so that it wouldn't be confused. So we did a little research on what that logo looks like, and how they use it on their documents. And believe it or not, there's another Tiger, and so now we have the Howard Tigers, and we thought we should take a look at them as well. And that concludes the research on the inventory. Um, next up for us is tomorrow, we have another branding meeting, and we have five proposals of various creative agencies that have submitted proposals to us that our initial committee will begin to look at. Um, we're looking at selecting a vendor, and then after that, adding people to our community, uh, to our committee to represent the community. So do you wanna add a little more concluding comments to that?
You know, I guess really what we're looking at doing is creating a universal or just cohesive image for our district. Uh, right now, as you can see, there's a lot of different images that are being used, and it's not very consistent, so consistency is kinda what we're looking for.
Well, even what we call ourselves, I mean, we're Huron School District, or we're Huron Public Schools, and then making sure that that's district-wide. So, I mean, just coming up with something that's cohesive look, making sure that we're calling ourselves the same thing, whether it's on the bus, or on the building, or wherever, just so that everyone's on the same page.
Questions from anyone? Comments? Thank you, great work in progress, sir. Okay, our next report will be Mr. Christoffersen with the Business Manager's Report.
This evening, all I have in the report is a report on the General Fund Revenue and Expenditures. So we're halfway through our financial year, which, uh, through December. And for revenue, we've collected seven million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which is forty-one percent of what is budgeted. Last year at this time, we'd collected seven million eight hundred and five thousand, which was forty-three percent of what was budgeted. On the spending side of things, we've spent seven million five hundred and one thousand dollars, or thirty-nine percent of the budget. Last year at this time, we'd spent seven million two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which was also thirty-nine percent of that budget. Things seem to be on track.
Any questions for Kelly? Okay, thank you. Okay, our next report will be the Superintendent with his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, several things to cover this morning, uh, this evening. I wanna start with the, um, announced retirement of, uh, Mr. Taplet. Mike, at the end of the year, will have put in seventeen years as our middle school principal, uh, which in personal notes, the exact number that I served as the high school principal, and, uh, some parallels. Um, he came here as the third stop, so right in the middle of his, uh, career. Having started at Bennett County, and then established himself at Scotland, and then gave us, uh, seventeen tremendous years. And so we'll wanna get started on, uh, on advertising, even while we're, uh, thanking Mr. Taplet in this last semester that he puts in here. Uh, we, we will, we're at a good point in the year to get the advertising out there and identify the best candidates. Whether those candidates are external candidates or interior candidates, we owe it to the community and to the Board of Education that we advertise and get the very best people, uh, we can involved in that. And then, uh, I'll be, uh, sending you information that you already have, but I'll, I'll, uh, go through it again on, on what the, um, parameters of pay are, and the ESD, and the schools that we compete with, so that we're all on the same page as far as the parameters of competitive salary in, uh, in getting, uh, the most, uh, the most people and the most qualified people interested in that position. And I just, Mike's been a professional, personal friend of mine, uh, long before we each came to Huron. And I'm excited for him as he's, uh, made the decision to, uh, to, uh, look for something else after a long, long career. We have other staff openings, I'll try to keep you up to date on those, right now, they're mainly in the special education field. And of course, following the retirements, we've also got a vocal music position that we'll be looking for, as Mrs. Clay's had announced her retirement. So I'll keep you updated on those as we go along. Um, I think we're probably going to be under some, uh, pressure to, uh, keep an eye on the enrollments of our special education programs, and what can our budget afford, what people are available to hire, and where do we have some caseloads that are getting, um, uncomfortably large as far as us making sure that the students and their families receive the services. And so I'll keep you updated on that as time goes along. The security system that's now run in the arena for the security of, uh, staff and then students when they're here, uh, later in the day, is I think up to full working right now, I'm impressed with what we're able to see on the screens. And so I'll be asking the board in general, and the board officers specifically, if you would like a, a monitor screen in here. I've thought of two or three things that you could, uh, consider, one of course would be a large one up on the wall. But with us conducting business, I don't know if that serves us as well as having a, a, uh, screen that one of the administrators, um, would monitor. We, we just need to talk about what you'd like in here as far as, uh, knowing what all's in the building while you folks are in session. So I'll be talking about that with you, uh, informally, one-on-one, to get some ideas, and we'll keep you updated on that. I did want to thank publicly the, uh, Corinne Community, who recognized the Huron Public Schools at their, um, annual New Year's celebration. The certificate they gave us says, "On behalf of the Corinne Community, we'd like to express our sincere appreciation for all that the Huron Public Schools have done to enrich our lives and our community." And so it's a beautiful plaque, which we'll display here in the, in the school district, and we thank the Corinne Community for thinking of us. That was, uh, the two that represented the community and, and presented it to us, our signatures are on there, "Alame Passo and Sato Loué." And so appreciate that, and wanted to publicly thank them for that. And then finally, uh, I'm sure there'll be interest in where we're headed with the calendar. For the academic calendar for 2018 and 2019, you have it i- in your board packets, it's on the, uh, screen so that it can be put out to the public, I'm watching the other monitor now to see when we put it out to the public, and I'll visit about that, uh, calendar here in just a moment. We can, there we go. And I don't know if we're able to, uh, that's a bit at a distance, I don't know, on the computer, Sherry, are we able to pull that closer in the corner? Okay. This calendar is, is a report from me, rather than a, uh, complete introduction of the calendar. If we were going to do a calendar automatically that was status quo with the last couple of years, then I would just present a calendar and say, "This is the calendar from the committee." I wanna do that in two weeks after I get feedback from you, and after this discussion causes feedback from the community. But what I will say, uh, right from the beginning, is that the calendar is as unique, thank you, Ms. Rollers, the calendar is as unique as the community of Huron is unique, okay? Across the state, most schools start between August sixteenth and, uh, the twenty-third, I guess would be the range. There's a few that start as early as Monday, August thirteenth, but that's basically the, the week where people get started. We've been after Labor Day, um, for several years, we went after Labor Day when we needed the extra construction time for the elementary schools. And we went after Labor Day, uh, to accommodate when Splash Central first came in, in order to find out what the impact of that would be in our community. There are two things that drive what is a very unique beginning to the calendar, that, that the committee, um, that after I heard the committee, the Superintendent decided to present it to you this way. We have many reasons to start school before Labor Day if we can do it without harming the community. And I'll give you several of those. A primary reason for starting early is that the, uh, we have three to four hundred students that are participating in activities that begin the first week of August, and so there's some real pressure to get some school going, rather than tie up families from the first of August all the way until June, when you run all of the activities without students here, without classes being held, and then you have to run until you get your days in at the end of May, and if we have snow days, it gets into June, that's a reason. Dual credits has become a major factor where the, the, um, community's students are involved in taking classes that are being taught by universities, and those classes, um, I don't have a definitive whether they're starting on the twentieth or the twenty-seventh. Mr. Radke, do you have a definite date? Corresponding date is the twentieth, so this year, we had students who had to take, uh, classes, uh, two weeks before school started. And so that is a driving force. One of the real interesting, uh, things that I learned in this discussion has to do with, uh, what we believe is, is a connection to the significant drop in participants in middle school fall activities. And that is that middle school kids do not have their own mobility, and so a lot of them do not think about or consider participating in activities until the school year starts. And so with many communities, the activity's starting, uh, on or about the twentieth or twenty-first, and us not getting our students here for their first day until after Labor Day, some of the activities are halfway through the year. Another significant factor has to do with the number of days we have to handle the count days before the deadline for special education. I'm looking at Mrs. Waylander as I give a secondhand version of this, but we are two weeks shorter than most school districts in getting all of our count information in, which has to be put in, in order to get our funding for special ed. Have I explained that in good enough lay terms? And so that is shortened. Another factor that is shortened is that we, we are two weeks, we are, we have two weeks less teaching going on before our, um, assessments. We have so much of our school year that's taking place after assessments take place, because the assessment dates are set nationwide. And then, and then our teaching goes on after that, rather than before the students are assessed and measured on, on how they were doing. So, um, the first caveat is a calendar I'll never see, but if we were just putting a calendar together for academics and we were forgetting about the community, the families, anything, and just said we're gonna get the most dollars, the best use of teaching for the dollars we have available, we would run a eleven-month calendar. We would begin on August one, and we'd end on June thirtieth, and we would take four-day weeks, and we would take week breaks, and therefore, we would only have four calendar weeks where students were, were not learning their writing, their reading, their language skills, their mathematics skills, which build upon each other. We're not gonna get there, some cities have gotten there, and other states, we're not gonna get there, uh, with community support. But that would be the extreme if we went to strictly an academic calendar. On the other end, if we went to strictly a community calendar, which is what we've had for the last few years, we would start at Labor Day, and then we would try to get out by the end of May and go into June only when snow pushed us that way. We've had some significant requests by parents, et cetera, to spread the calendar out a little bit, and not have, and not have such pressure to get it in at such a, in such a tight window. So that would be if we were at the absolute community calendar. What we've tried to do here is put a calendar together that reflects, uh, the uniqueness of Huron. That, um, State Fair is an iconic part of our community, and I had agriculture people plead with me that they believe that the reason why the State Fair has come back strong, there's- there's several reasons, but a key reason is that the entire community blocks that week, and that is State Fair week in here in South Dakota. And so the discussions about a calendar we ran for better than a decade would have started on about the 16th, but then we would take off the 30th and the 31st for the State Fair. The people that are huge supporters of the State Fair have said they believe that what that does is, is that pauses the academics for people to run to the fair a couple of days, and we've lost the significant momentum of what matters so much to Huron and to this area's economy, our ag community, our support of FFA and 4H. And so what I tried to look at was, okay, so what would happen if we kept that week as the iconic State Fair week, but tried to get started earlier? I could easily have done that and start on the 13th and get two weeks in, except another unique thing that's iconic to Huron is Splash Central. And we have to be focused on, it is such a large part of our community and our bringing people into the community, et cetera, and their closing date is August 19th. And so for us to take a week away of their workers, et cetera, it got very complicated. Now, we even talked, Splash Central was represented there, and we talked about, well, could we have them start later in the day? And they opened my eyes to another unique phenomenon. Their workers are very involved in our activity schedule. They are in our band. They're in our athletics. And so if we had school, then all of the activities are right after school, then there's no one to run Splash Central. And so that would force its closure. That is why the week of the 13th to the 17th, we have not touched students in there because Splash Central works around their activities in order to keep the pool open. So what I am exposing you to tonight, hoping to put in as a proposal in two weeks, based on what I hear tonight and what we hear in the next couple of weeks, is to run school for a week. Sheri Nelson has helped me understand that we may be able to dedicate a lot of that week to NWA assessments because you do your assessments at the beginning of the school year as to how are kids doing? Get those assessments possibly in there. Get our dual credits started. Get all of our classes. All the things you have to do in the first couple of days, you're going to do anyway. And then respect the Splash Central on the top side and the State Fair on the bottom side. Take the week completely off. An updated version actually has the 27th in white rather than in red. White because the students are not going to be there, but the 27th would be one of our teacher planning days on Monday of that calendar. So the teachers, this is for the benefit of the community. I know you folks know this. There's two terms you deal with in any calendar, student contact days. Those are the days in this calendar that are green for the first semester and blue for the second semester. And then teacher contract days. And so on your own calendars, Roger, if you'd move that up to the, so I can see the bottom left-hand corner. There's the guide to what we have. We have 174 student contact days, two parent-teacher conference days, which our teachers actually put in full days and then a half a day. So that's how they get those in and have the parents when they're most available. Four teacher in-service days and a half a day teacher checkout day. So the student contact days are 174, and the teacher contract days are 180.5. The final thing that this calendar addresses is allowing for the graduation to be on the Sunday before the Memorial Day holiday. We've had parents, board members, faculty that have asked us for that consideration at any time possible. There is some allowance at the state for the seniors to be done before those final three days. The seniors just got to make sure they have enough of their hours in, and Mr. Radke is responsible to me to keep track of that. But if we did that, we could get away from the holiday. Because what's unique to Huron is if a lot of us dedicate Labor Day to the State Fair and we dedicate Memorial Day to graduation, we pretty much cut people's summer break. So I'm ready for people to answer questions. Policy says that the superintendent of schools will present a calendar to the school board. The school board has the options of approving it or rejecting it, putting the superintendent back to work to come up with another proposal. Policy also says the superintendent may use committees to gather input to come up with a consensus. So that's the process that we're in, and I'm very open to questions, comments, or advice before I make it a proposal in two weeks. And then out of human interest, besides the student sitting here, the young lady sitting in the back is Gemma Keeler. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
And she is a junior covering this for the student newspaper. She interviewed me for about 40 minutes this afternoon, and I encouraged her to come tonight so she could learn from the board as she puts the information together for the students' newspaper. Mr. Chairman, that's where I'm at, opening to whatever you want to do. Hey, that was quite a report. Are there any questions for our superintendent, David?
Start with an easy one here, which I think will be easy. There are a couple of symbols on the calendar that I didn't see in the legend, like on August 9, 10, 13, 14, 15.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. 9, 10, 13, 14, 15 have a symbol that once I put in all the explanations, which are in the old calendar, that is the new teacher orientation days. Those are days that those teachers do not get paid for, but they are explained when they sign a new contract that they're working five extra days the first year in order to receive orientation and all of the things that cause teaching and learning to take place in Huron. From our ESL programs to our sheltered programs to our life space training programs. Those are new teacher orientation days. Thank you.
And then the symbol on the 16, 17 of August and also on January 2nd.
And there'll be, once it's completed, it'll be labeled, but 16, 17, 27, which I'll have in white, and the second are the full teacher in-service days.
Okay.
And then the 27th is a day that principals have the option of working with us on requesting that to be flexed to earlier in the summer if they have a presenter they want to come in, et cetera. Thank you for that.
What was the discussion regarding getting first semester done before Christmas? Because it appears that now we have a shorter period in January than we have this year. We only have about a week and two days to finish up the first semester.
Very, very good. We are not happy with how that has turned out. But the value of getting started with the things that I explained became a value system of getting started more than, obviously, if we were going to school the week of the State Fair and we were going to school three days during the week last week of Splash Central, we could easily be done at semester time, or at Christmas time. We were not quite able to get there. I happen to be, as part of the evaluation of the administrators, I go to their faculty meetings. And so by happenstance, I was at Mr. Radke's meeting on last Friday. And what he explained to them is that when he had to prioritize getting us started versus having it stay the way it was, he's willing to work on the semester thing, and he asked the teachers to come up with innovative ways that they will have the opportunity to petition if they want to do any or all of their semester testing before the end of the year and then identify what unit they're going to do afterwards in order to complete the semester. Mr. Radke, did I use the right words to explain that?
Yep.
Okay. So we don't know how that'll come out, but he's challenged them to come up with innovative ways to possibly reach conclusion but not cheat the students out of the number of instruction days. By far, we would prefer that the semester ended before the Christmas break. The greatest loss to the way it's set up now, and it's something that'll be interesting to see what Mr. Radke and Mrs. Konecchi and their counselors come up with, is we really had great participation in the credit recovery when it was during the Christmas break, and we've had very limited participation since then. And so whether it's now close enough that they can identify and run the interventions during the Christmas break is something that they have to research. But that is not a perfect calendar, but going seven days, if we had put seven more days in second semester than in first, and their block schedule, that's actually 14-hour class periods. That would, the principal made the decision that that'd be too far off pace. If you are not teaching semester courses, it's a non-issue. But if you're teaching semester courses like government, like debate, like geography, that becomes a major factor. And if you want to put Mr. Radke on the spot, I'll get him to a microphone.
I don't need to get him on the record yet.
Okay. Very good questions.
You know, I'll say that, you know, I am having difficulty with the idea of starting school for a week and then taking six weekdays off because five days of a fair week plus Monday, Labor Day. I'm not saying I'm not, I can't live with that. But I'm going to, it takes some convincing for me that that's what's best for our students. I'm thinking especially for our elementary kids, you bring them in for a week and then you turn them loose again for another week and a half, basically taking a Christmas break in that first month. And I got to assume that for those elementary kids, that first week is going to be almost a total loss. Except for maybe some introductory things, learning where things are at in the building. Educational-wise, I'm going to need some convincing that that's a good educational use of those five days for our elementary kids. And, you know, I'm just, I was thinking that if, you know, I want to respect, we have to respect the State Fair, but I don't know that requires taking Monday, Tuesday off that week. And if we took Monday, Tuesday off in August and we did an early release on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that would give us three extra days in that first semester. And then if you did a lopsided, you know, took three days on either side of the semesters and you could get first semester done before Christmas. And that would then allow students to do the credit recovery, which I do think is a very important academic tool that we need to get students on the track for graduation. So nothing I'm saying is something I'm going to, you know, push to the end, that I'm going to, you know, require that we do. Or, but I'm just, I'm trying to think through issues that I'm going to want to hear a discussion about. Maybe, you know, talk to calendar committee members and maybe send this back to the calendar committee to get, to talk to that, talk about those issues. But I need to do some more research on that myself. But I must kind of put out there on this introductory day that I'm going to need some convincing that this is the best calendar for us to proceed on. And I know that Mr. Nebusik has done a lot of work, and this is always a very difficult idea, a very difficult way to manage Splash Central and the State Fair and graduation and the Christmas break period and when do we start first and second semester. And so I definitely want to respect all the work that's already been done. But I also got to, you know, do my job as a board member to make sure we're comfortable with the calendar that's produced. So I know, and I'm glad we're taking the opportunity for next meeting to kind of be a public hearing on it. Invite members of the public to talk to us as board members. I would definitely invite people to talk to me. And I'm sure other board members would also appreciate that contact. And to come to the meeting in two weeks to kind of give testimony on it and give opinion on it. And then we can make, have further deliberation, talk about it some more. And whether we approve a final calendar then, and two weeks after that, or send it back to the calendar committee, we can make those decisions then. But I think it's a good process we have laid out for us, so we have plenty of time to consider this well. It's definitely a big decision for our district when deciding if we start before or after Labor Day. It's just a huge community issue, and it's something that the whole community, I think, should be engaged in. So if we're starting like that, I think the calendar committee with its composition is a good start for that. And we've started on the right path, and I look forward to kind of seeing the process through this conclusion.
All things are well received at this end. I feel bad that Mr. Bischoff had to leave. He had a family commitment. Because I know that he's got strong feelings about making sure that the State Fair is a big part of the community discussion. And so it really makes it unique for us, and it's, I knew he was going to leave, so that's no problem. He's got a child commitment tonight, and that's where all of you should have your priority won. But, so anyway, it'll be interesting to see what the feedback is. You actually identified very clearly, I guess where I would follow up with this, that the extremes of what we do are to allow the students early out on Thursday. That's what we used to do for years, so they'd have Friday off and early out on Thursday.
Of Fair Week?
Of Fair Week. We did that for a long time. Then I had pretty passionate pleas about the importance of the 29th because it starts with evening activities out there and setting up, et cetera. Okay. Actually, if you put two days on, the 27th and 28th, you're getting close to the tolerance point. If you put four days on, you're at the tolerance point. So you've identified the correct week. So I can't speak for the ag community that feels very, very strongly. I just, I tried to respect it with the first model that I put out.
Yep.
And I'm hoping what people are hearing is that the students, and we have a lot of needs to get going, or we're falling back, okay? The after-Labor Day, it was easier for us when Sioux Falls had voted to go that way. And so I monitor theirs because that has a lot to do then with calendars statewide, et cetera. And I pulled up their website before we started, and they're beginning on Thursday, the 23rd next year. And of course, they don't take any State Fair breaks. So that's five, six, seven, seven days that they're moving ahead, and we could get to seven. But I think I've said it out of respect, is that does State Fair attendance hinge upon us not touching that week? Because we have awfully good community support for our public schools for this to become a brewer. And so I don't think it'll be, but I want it to be a good discussion.
And I would just, from my perspective, we have a six-day fair. I think the fair starts on Wednesday because we have the unofficial preview day. People are going out there, setting stuff up. My family goes out there every Wednesday because it's a fun day to walk around and just, it's not very busy out there and you can still see a lot of stuff. So that's why, I mean, for me, for protecting the fair, that's that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but.
Well, and that's kind of the official start for public to go out there. But as far as your 4H kids and stuff like that, I mean, they're in there at the beginning of that week, you know, setting up their pens and getting their critters in and hay and cleaning them and all that. So, I mean, for the public that goes, yeah, I mean, Wednesday's kind of that first day that you actually go to the fair. But for the kids that are involved in some of those events, I mean, that thing starts early. And I don't know what the numbers are as far as kids in the district that do that, but.
Mr. Lee, point of clarification to what you're saying. If a student verifies with us that their parents, that they're participating in the fair, we treat that just like being gone to a football game or a basketball game. They're still missing school.
Sure.
Like those others are, but they're not, doesn't account on their attendance record or whatever. So the only reason I put those things out is so that the public who doesn't deal with it every day knows what you have in front of you. Didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's, nope. That's all I had. That's a very important consideration.
Well, and just to comment on both sides of it. The athletics part of it is very important to my family. And it's very convenient if school's going on at the same time, especially with driving for Derek this year and stuff. So I see both sides of it. I also know that I've got a lot of family from Springs and schools that have already started school. They get down here on the weekend just before fairs start. They get all their stuff set up. They've got two to three days of school before they're actually doing their showing stuff. So the State Fair has worked to accommodate those schools where the kids are in school and actually don't come to the fair necessarily the first, second, or even third day. So I think that I agree with, I agree with all of you. I see all, I think they're all very good points, and I'd like to. I see all, I think they're all very good points, and I'd like to hear also what the community has to say about it. I think that we could definitely look at a couple of those days as maybe, maybe being educational days too, and really not taking away from the State Fair. I don't think that that will affect it as much, but I respect the fact that you guys have, have taken all that into consideration, and I, I do see both sides of it for sure. Thank you for the explanation too, by the way, of all the, the dual credits, and I know you've said stuff about that before, but it's very helpful. I don't think a lot of people take that into consideration.
Frank, did you have any comments, opinion on it?
The only thing I would say is, like, Mr. Wheeler put forward was getting that semester to end before Christmas would be a big thing on my wish list, I would say, because over Christmas break, I mean, the worst thing I have to do is worry about semester tests right, right after Christmas break, you know? So getting that back before Christmas would make Christmas an actual relaxed, in break. It's not a stressful situation, you know, studying, that sort of stuff, so. You guys said it'd be the only topic I would have to bring forward.
Thank you, Frank. Any other comments on the superintendent's report? Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek.
Thank you.
Good report. Okay, now we will move into old business. Our only item of old business is a first reading of our Section J policy review. Unless anybody has any comments or questions, or...
Good with the corrections?
Yeah. Okay. We'll consider this our first reading, and in two weeks, we'll have it on the agenda for a second reading and approval. Okay, we'll move into new business. Our first item of new business is Technology One-to-One iPad Program. Mr. Radke, Mr. Hallers spoke to us back in November on their desire to continue with the iPad initiative, and so they are requesting purchase of iPads. So I'll ask for a motion to approve this purchase, and then we'll open up for discussion.
So moved?
Seconded. Moved and seconded. We have Mr. Hallers and Mr. Radke here. If anybody has any questions for them, or do any board members have any questions or comments?
My comment from the superintendent is this is such a large initiative that we really like the board to tell us to move forward before they get into the specifics, the bidding process, whatever. So we're not bringing bids tonight. We're asking for, you received the report, you had a month, and is this the direction to proceed?
Yes, and they had a great report back in November, comparing the different options available, and Apple technology seemed to be the, in my opinion, the best direction to continue moving forward with. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then we will vote. We're voting on a request to purchase iPads. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Next item of new business is Governing Board Annual Review Questionnaire. This is something we do on an annual basis, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Kelly, would you like to comment on this, especially for our new board members' information?
This document is just one piece of what is called continuing disclosure, when you have bonds and capital outlay certificates that are out there that are not completely paid for yet. We have post issuance compliance that we have to deal with, and this is just one piece of it, where the board looks at these questions that I've prefilled with the answers for you, and approve this document, and then there's quite a bit of other post issuance compliance that I have to do, like I have to put our budgets out there, audit reports, other financial documents that go out on a website that is run by the Municipal Rulemaking Standards Board, and that is all out there for anyone to go and look at. So anybody can go to that website and pull up the Here in School District and see all of our debt, and see all of our documents that go along with it. So this is just one piece of the puzzle. In past years, we've had two of these questionnaires. One was for tax exempt bonds, and one was for taxable bonds. But last summer, when we, or two summers ago, when we redid the capital outlay certificates and did the sports improvement project, part of that was to get rid of all the taxable bonds, so we don't have those anymore. They were related to the high school remodel in two thousand nine.
Mr. Chairman, comment? Yeah, related to this, most years, this is a report, and, and as you know, it's so technical that, thank goodness, we've got a former state auditor to keep it all straight for us, but because we're dealing with the taxpayer's money and the bonds, I just want to also reference anyone who, the board members know this very well, but anyone in the public who would have missed the, the press release that through Mr. Kristofferson's work, the refinancing of elementary school bonds is gonna save the district in the next twenty years one point two million dollars. He was able to refinance ten million dollars worth of bonds that were used to pay for the new elementary schools, and so that now, by refinancing those over the course of the next twenty-two years, we're gonna realize that savings. And so, with all the technical things that he explained tonight, and I hope you never test the superintendent over the technicalities that he explained, I think it's worth noting in layperson's terms that the diligence of that work is huge as far as the stewardship of, of taxpayer money. I want to thank Mr. Kristofferson in front of you, so.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from any board members? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. We're voting on approving Governing Board Annual Review Questionnaire. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Next, we need to accept the Clean Diesel Grant offer in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents to be used to partially pay for the purchase of a new school bus in twenty eighteen nineteen. I'll ask for a motion to accept this grant.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or comments from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote. Voting on accepting the Clean Diesel Grant in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents. Those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Our final item of new business is permission to purchase a school bus off the West Central Public School bid from Trucks of Bismarck in the amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, to be paid for with the Clean Diesel Grant that we just approved, and the twenty eighteen nineteen capital outlay budget in the amount of sixty-two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Having said that, I will ask for a motion to approve this, and then we'll discuss it.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is, anybody have any discussion or comments, question? Kelly, any comments?
I think the only comment I would add is that we just received in the mail and via email that grant award this morning, and they said in the email that there were fifteen applications, and they were able to fund nine of them. So it was, did turn out to be a competitive grant.
Great.
Excellent.
To clarify, so the bus as for, as proposed to be purchased, is that a fourth bus then that we're gonna buy off the West Central Public School bid, or is this revising one of the ones that we did last month?
No.
So we bought two in December off this, off the same bid?
Right, we bought two in December to be delivered any day.
Mm-hmm.
Well, previously, we'd bought two to be delivered any day, and then in December, we bought our two that we'll pay for with the eighteen nineteen budget. They'll be delivered in July, so this is actually a fifth bus that'll be delivered in July.
Okay.
To qualify for the grant, you have to prove that your, this bus is over and above what you normally do. So we normally do two a year. This year, we'll have, this one year, we'll have three. And you have to kind of prioritize your trade-ins to pick out which bus is going to be put into this program. We had to say, okay, in three years from now, which bus would it be? That's gotta be the bus that gets destroyed. So it's actually not our worst bus, it's our seventh-worst bus that gets put into the program.
Based on the Clean Diesel Act?
Yes.
So, with the, I know the two that we bought increased the size of the fleet by two. Is this increasing the size of the fleet, or is this gonna maintain the size of the fleet, and we're gonna replace a bus?
This bus has to be destroyed. That's the whole point of the Clean Diesel Grant. So the bus that we've identified for this grant, we'll have to send them pictures of it that we have chopped the frame in two, and that we have drilled a hole into the block of the engine. We have to document that and send it to PR.
So therefore, the fleet, in this whole process, the fleet's only increasing by two? Am I correct on that?
Correct. It will, when we buy the two in July with the regular budget, that had to be a cash deal, so there's not trade-ins, so technically, therefore, a short period of time, we'll have two extra buses, and then at that time, we'll decide where our student population is and what our need is for routes. We could possibly later that month in July, put two into the surplus auction, or not, depending on what we need to do.
Okay. So I, I think, so tonight, we're buying a, a bus that's not gonna increase the size of the fleet, because we are taking the older one out and drilling a hole in it?
Right, and have to take the hole in it, you have to take it to the salvage yard, and we have to take whatever money we receive for that, and that'll reduce the grant amount.
Okay.
Hey, thank you for that clarification, Kelly. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we are, we will vote. Voting on permission to purchase the school bus off West Central School bid from Trucks of Bismarck in the amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, to be paid for with the Clean Diesel Grant in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents, and capital outlay budget from twenty eighteen nineteen in the amount of sixty-two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. This completes our agenda for tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Seconded.
They moved and seconded to adjourn. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.